Tim, you ready?
You're right.
I'd like to call the March 3 meeting of the New Market Town Council to order and we will start with the reading of
I've got to find it.
the emergency order.
The Chair of the Town Council, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, has determined that Town Council is authorized to meet electronically. There, please note that there is a physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting at Town Hall. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this has confirmed that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access video or other electronic means. We're utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through Zoom, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing this following phone number. 1-646-558-8656 with access code 911-702-5727, or by clicking the website, the address on their website at newmarketnh.gov and watching on Channel 13 locally. We provide public notice of the necessary information to access the meeting, and we previously gave notice to the public on how to access the meeting using Zoom. Instructions are provided on the town and New Market's website at www.nuemarketnh.gov, and we are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body that if there are problems with access, if anybody has a problem, please call 603-659-3617-1321. And if there is a problem, we'll adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at another time. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. And we are going to do roll call attendance. If the councillors who are not present, please state if there's anybody in the room with them. Start Wendy.
Councillor Dumont?
Present.
Councillor Sanders?
President.
Councillor Blackstone?
Councillor, you're muted.
Okay. Present and alone.
Councillor Brabec?
Present and alone.
Councillor Kuiper?
Present and alone.
Councillor Burns?
Present and alone.
Councillor Weinstein?
Present.
And we will start now with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first item that we have tonight is to accept minutes from the February 17th.
Public forums and public hearing?
Oh, I skipped right over it.
Oh, sorry. No, you're right. Minutes first, sorry. I skipped the two. I had the drunk order.
No, no, you're right. That's how it reads on my thing too. I think it reads, I have minutes twice.
Yeah.
So I
Did you see that?
So the first item that we have is for a public hearing, and that's for Resolution 2020-2021-33. It's the acceptance of Boulder Drive as a town road. And is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this? I think we have a couple people. I am seeing none. Just giving it a second. And I will close the public hearing at 7:04. And I will go ahead and open the public forum. And ask for any other items that anyone in the public might wish to speak about. Is there anyone from the public? There's no one in the audience, but is there anyone on the call who wishes to speak on any other items?
I see no one raising their hand.
Thank you. So seeing none, I will close the public forum at 7:04. Now, we will move on to the acceptance of minutes. And so we have one meeting, and that's from February 17, 2021, and I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 17, 2021.
I'll second that motion.
Any questions or comments? I am seeing none. So if you could call the roll, please. Councillor Dumont?
Aye.
Councillor Sanders?
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councillor Brabec?
Aye.
Councillor Kuiper?
Aye.
Councillor Burns?
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. The next item that we have is the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item is, I'm going to give an update on the COVID-19 pandemic. First, as of February 24, we have 10 or 0.1% of our population for active cases in 409 cumulative cases, or 4% of the town population. This is a reduction of 90% of cases since the December 21 peak. Of these cases, 11.7 are in institutional setting. Over the last 14 days, we've had 35 new cases total. 5,750 PCR tests have been issued to New Market residents, or 61% of the population have been tested. Just an update on the vaccinations, and what was written in my report is actually have changed since the time I wrote it. They, the state has announced that they hope to have Phase 2A of the vaccination rollout by the end of the month. Phase 2A covers teachers and childcare workers of about 75,000 people. The next group is 2B, which would be between those, between 2B and 64. This has been began expediting sooner because the introduction of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which is a one jab vaccine. If you have not already heard, this weekend, by invite only, they are having a super vaccination site at the Loudon Speedway with 12,000 Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines being issued that day. It's going to be from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and these will be given to those who are in Group 1B, which is 65 and above, that are scheduled in April. Some of them got bounced back to April, so they're trying to move those up. The fixed sites in Exeter and Dover will still be open for scheduled appointments, so don't change your appointment if you think you want to try to go get the one in Loudon. Stay where you are. The state will be contacting you to move your appointment, and please do not show up the site to receive the vaccine. The, we're still trying to work with partners, see if we can sustain distributing vaccines locally for those who cannot make it to one of the state-determined sites. The next item is the general, discuss the general permit in the proposed Great Bay intermunicipal agreement. In November, the EPA issued the Great Bay Total Nitrogen General Permit for the 12 communities and 13 wastewater plants in the Great Bay region. The permit goal is to improve the quality of the Great Bay by reducing nitrogen discharges. This would include upgrading wastewater plants and non-point sources. We will be covered by this new general permit. The cities of Dover, Rochester, and Portsmouth are attempting to create an intermunicipal agreement between the 12 communities to share resources and costs associated with the implement of the general permit. While we are willing to work with our neighbors, the Environmental Services Director and I cannot recommend joining the intermunicipal agreement. New Market has already contributed significant funds and made significant efforts towards restoring the health of the estuary by making upgrades to our plant and complying with the terms of the administrative order of consent that we entered with the EPA in 2013. Besides Exeter and Portsmouth, no other community has made such commitments or expended the same position and believe our investment at the level they are proposing would not be beneficial to New Market. We would suggest that we pick and choose projects to join the other communities to work on. We are also concerned over the governing end of the group. As currently proposed, the city managers of Dover, Rochester, and Portsmouth would automatically have seats on the board of the group. There would be two remaining seats appointed by these other three city managers. We do not feel that this makeup would represent our community in the efforts that we have made. I gave a, attached to my report was a copy of the proposed intermunicipal agreement and potential costs. Again, we will be willing to work with the communities, just not as presented. Any questions on that? I've already reached out to the city manager of Dover because he contacted me what our position was, and I said at this point in time, we couldn't join with the current makeup.
I don't know if anyone else has a question. I apologize because I did mean to reach out to you sooner about this. That, the, it wasn't in the attached to the report.
Oh, I will get that out to the council. My apologies.
Was that the agreement you were referring to?
Yeah.
Okay. I know you had sent it to us via email a couple weeks ago. I did just want to ask, obviously, the language that you presented is not a firm, no, we don't ever want to work with anybody, but this is something that we're not comfortable with. Did the other city managers have any sort of response to that, or?
No.
Okay. So it's just, this is how it is?
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah. At this point, they, we don't know if they're willing to negotiate. We think they may be, but at this point, we have not received any indication that they would be.
Okay. Thank you.
So the next item is that we've been recently fielding several questions in the accuracy of our voting machines stemming from a situation in Wyndham, New Hampshire. If you have not heard the situation, a Democratic State Representative candidate requested a recount after losing her race by 24 votes. The results of the recounts showed four Republican candidates each gaining approximately 300 votes and a candidate losing by 90. The three other Democratic candidates each gained in the range of 18 to 28 votes, which is not unusual for recount of a machine count of ballots in a town the size of Wyndham. The same candidates for state representative who won on the election day were also the winners of the recount. The recount was appealed to the New Hampshire Ballot Law Commission, who has held a public hearing, then voted unanimously to uphold the election of the four Republican candidates. Since then, we've had, again, we've had a few questions in the accuracy of our machines. The town clerk and I have been working with the town attorney to find out the situation. The Deputy Secretary of State said that the Wyndham Accu-Votes issue appears to have arisen from some sort of vote counting mistake and not from the manipulation of the Accu-Vote machine. He said that whether or not, whether the town of New Market continues to use the Accu-Vote machine is up to the town. If it decides not to use the machine, then the town will return to hand counting. He said the Accu-Vote machines have been used in New Hampshire for 25 years. There is no internet access to these machines, so you cannot access them, and there's no exterior access to them physically, as all the external wire and plug accesses are closed off. The Accu-Vote machine is the only machine approved in New Hampshire to read and count ballots. We have had recounts in the town in the past with the outcomes not changing greatly. This seems to have been due, and usually when it's an issue on a ballot, it's due to an error or some, and not some conspiracy. Just in. So it's usually a spoiled ballot, not a situation where the machine has been tampered with. Like somebody will check a box instead of filling in the circles, that count, that vote was not counted. And other than that, that's all I have this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Town Manager? Councillor Dumont?
Yes, Steve, I just wanted to circle back to the vaccination. You had mentioned looking into the possibility, if it's something that we could do locally. Is that something that we have space for that like our firefighters, EMTs could do? Is it something where we'd want to see National Guard here to help out? Because I like the idea of having New Market being actively involved, but I just wasn't sure what that would look like for people.
Odds are it would be our own EMTs, and we would just have to find a location. I know we've discussed using the Beach Street Community Center.
Yeah.
Or actually having the individuals go to the senior center to do it, or going to homes of people who could not get out.
Oh, okay.
So, but we just, we've got to get the vaccines, and we've got to get it from them to do it.
I understand. So, thank you.
Any other questions for the Town Manager?
I just, I forgot one thing I want to remind. The council that on Tuesday is Election Day, and four of you will be having polls that day. I did sign out a schedule. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, but I will need a quorum of the board, of the council to certify the vote at the end of the evening as well and to help with the processing of the ballots then. What the town clerk has determined is that those who are on the ballot can help with the school ballots, and those on the school ballot can help with the town count. So you're not touching the ballots that you're on, so.
So it's all hands?
All hands on deck that evening.
Fantastic. I only had just one question about the voting machines. And have there been, I mean, since you've written the report, have there been any other updates from Wyndham? So, I mean, my understanding is that they, they did a recount.
Correct.
And, I mean, as you noted in your report, but, and that's where it's left.
That's it. Yep. It was interesting because, I mean, I've, we've received requests to have recounts locally, but it was past the point of the deadline. Plus, we, since it was a state and federal election, we wouldn't handle the recount. It would be the Secretary of State's office in Concord. So, yeah, no, that's where it is. A lot of discussion about this in Wyndham, but other than that, there's been no other issues statewide.
Councillor Dumont?
I did want to comment on that, only because when I, when I first got onto the Town Council and I worked my first election, that was one of my questions for our town moderator and our town clerk. Thankfully, those positions haven't changed recently, so I swear by the expertise that they're willing to impart and share with the town. And I would say that if you are someone who in town has genuine concern about election security, just come and work one voting day, and you'll see how legitimate it is, how transparent it is, just how honest people do try to be down here, even when it is just a bunch of volunteers. It is, it's one of those things that, I think it's really important to stress that we have good, safe, accurate elections here. We are not a community that has these kind of problems, and thankfully, and hopefully, that'll never change.
And just to add to that, one thing that everybody has to remember in our, in the Accu-Vote system is we still have a paper ballot at the end of the day, that if need be, there can be a recount by counting the paper ballots, where some other states, they do not have the paper ballots. New Hampshire, you must have a paper ballot, but other states don't. So you hear all these stories or conspiracies during the past few months or past and we do have a secure election system in New Hampshire that is always a hard copy of the vote.
Thank you. I am seeing no other comments, so I will move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Councillor Dumont?
I will say that the Ordinance Oversight Committee met for the first time in many months. We kind of had a couple of speed bumps that slowed us down, but we had a productive meeting. We discussed, the topic was noise ordinances to address and hopefully, lay some of the concerns that members of town had brought up in close proximity to outdoor events that were happening this summer and some indoor events. And what the committee decided on is that the Town Manager's Office is going to look into seeing about setting up possibly some form of licensing for live music events that can give some good ground rules for everybody to work with, so we understand better how to operate in that type of environment. And that's something that we hope will, if it is something that we can flesh it out and have it work properly, we'll just be there moving forward when it comes to hosting those types of events. So it's clear, it's transparent, it's obvious. We know what works, we know what doesn't work. But I hope in the next few more information on that and where that develops. That's all I had.
Thank you. Councillor Brabec?
The Ad hoc Riverfront Advisory Committee met as well, a few days ago, I believe, and first time, I think, since before the pandemic. I think it's been about a year. So, kind of still starting, not over again, but, but it's going to be a little while before we're up and running, I think. But the Town Manager is going to follow up with the university, who had done some previous student research on projects around the riverfront and, you know, looking at what the different options are there. And so he's going to follow up and see if there's any students who would want to continue that work.
Great, thank you. Any other committee reports? I am seeing none. So, moving on. We have two resolutions tonight in the second reading, and the first one is, I'm getting it up. Resolution 2020-2021-33, and it's the acceptance of Boulder Drive as a town road, and I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-2021-33, the acceptance of Boulder Drive as a town road.
I will second that motion. Sure. Just the, Boulder Heights was a subdivision that was approved by the planning board in 2016, and it was developed and owned by Public Land Holdings and is located at 36 Dame Road. They construct 11 single-family homes with adjacent lands preserved in perpetuity as open space. The project is now being completed by Turner Porter and the President of Public Land Holding, Inc., and they had requested that the roadway, which has been constructed in town regulation, be formally accepted as a town road, that in order the residents of Boulder Heights subdivision can receive public services. Pursuant to the law, there will be some financial impact, because, you know, we're maintaining it now, but it does meet the standards of the town engineers as well as the Public Works Director.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for the Town Manager? Seeing none. If you could call the roll, please. Councillor Dumont?
Aye.
Councillor Sanders?
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councillor Brabec?
Aye.
Councillor Kuiper?
Aye.
Councillor Burns?
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein? Passes 7-0. The next item that we have is Resolution 2020-2021-34, and that's South Main Street, Bay Road, and Cushing Road Water Project, and I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-2021-34, South Main Street, Bay Road, and Cushing Road Water Project.
I will second that motion.
And Sean Gregg is here to talk about the resolution.
Okay. This is the projects that passed Warren article for the water main replacements. So it's a water main replacement from Grant, Grant Road all the way to Packers Falls Road. It's a water main replacement from Route 108 on Bay Road all the way to the Lamprey River Park. And it also includes a sewer main replacement on, in the same stretch. The reason for doing that is because that sewer main, I don't know how old it is, but on 1900, it's on a map from 1901, so it's well over 100 years old. The Bay Road Water Main and the South Main Street Water Main are from 1895. And also included in this piece is a, an extension of the water main from Bay Road down Cushing Road to the Moody Point. Moody Point will be paying for that through betterment fees. The money for this, these projects will be coming from the Rural Development Funds, except for the sewer portion will be coming from sewer capital reserves. We put this job, we put all, all this project together to, out to bid as one project to try and get the best price by lumping them all together. We got, we received great prices. We received 10 bids, with the lowest bid being Greenwich at just under $3.8 million. So, once you add in the contingencies, and Wright Pierce will be overseeing the extension to Moody Point, and Fussin O'Neil would be overseeing the projects for Bay Road and South Main Street. The total estimated cost for this with the contingencies, the bid, and engineering is $4.5 million.
Greg, are there any questions or comments? I am seeing none. I just, I had one question, just looking over the information about, about the project, and I was just curious if I, Wright Pierce and, I'm forgetting the other name of the other company.
Fussin O'Neil.
Yeah, why, there's two groups overseeing the different projects.
And that's because we went through the process of what, how we select engineers, and Fussin O'Neil was selected as the, as the engineer at the time for that project, and we hired him to, to start engineering those projects. Moody Point had been working with Wright Pierce on that project for them, so they already did a lot of the pre-engineering work. So Moody Point is paying for that portion, and they would, wanted to save as much money as they could, so they wanted Wright Pierce on their portion of the project.
Makes total sense. Councillor Dumont?
No, you can cancel it, actually. You're good. Thanks.
Awesome. I know that I, for one, am excited to see these
Me too.
over 100-year-old water mains to be replaced, so. Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please. Councillor Dumont?
Aye.
Councillor Sanders?
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councillor Brabec?
Aye.
Councillor Kuiper?
Aye.
Councillor Burns?
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Sean. So, moving on to new business, we have two, two nominations or appointments. And the first is for David Wade, and that's a reappointment to, to the Veterans, the Veterans Memorial Committee. War Memorial Trust Committee. I wanted to get the right name. And with a term to expire March 2024, and I would accept a motion to approve that application.
I'll make a motion to approve David Wade to the Veterans Memorial Trust Committee.
I will second that nomination.
Just one quick thing that reminded me, that the term would be up in April, not March, because of the new change in the charter, that all officials are up in April, not
Oh, that
Yeah.
applied to everything. Does that impact the?
No.
No, okay.
Just want to make sure.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Councillor Dumont?
Aye.
Councillor Sanders?
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councillor Brabec?
Aye.
Councillor Kuiper?
Aye.
Councillor
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. The next nomination that we have is for David Smith, and that's as a cemetery trustee and with the term to expire in April 2023.
I'll make a motion to, for the appointment of David Smith as cemetery trustee with the term expiration of April 2023.
I'll second that motion.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Councillor Dumont?
Aye.
Councillor Sanders?
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councillor Brabec?
Aye.
Councillor Kuiper?
Aye.
Councillor Burns?
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. And then we have three resolutions in the first reading tonight, and the first is Resolution 2020-2021-35, and it's creating an Arts and Tourism Trust. Whereas the Arts and Tourism Commission was created by the New Market Town Council to study, consider, and study, consider, and make recommendations to the town council and town manager, general policies for the arts and tourism in the town of Newmarket. The commission will develop and promote programs, forums, and exhibits that highlight the town's active art-related venues currently existing within, within the town. And whereas the commission wants to conduct fundraising activities for the purpose of supporting the commission's mission, and whereas funds raised from private sources cannot be commingled with public municipal funds, per New Hampshire RSA 31 colon 19, now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby resolve pursuant to RSA 31 colon 19 to establish an Arts and Tourism Trust Fund for accepting public and private donations for the purpose of carrying out the mission of the Arts and Tourism Commission of the town of Newmarket. And further be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that, one, the trust shall be governed by the members of the Arts and Tourism Commission; two, the trust funds shall be maintained and administered by the trustees of the trust funds; three, the town manager shall serve as agent of the trust; four, the town manager, excuse me, shall not disperse any of the trust funds, any of the trust funds without prior written authorization of the Arts and Tourism Commission in accordance with the town's purchasing policies. First reading, March 3rd, 2021. The that we have is Resolution 2020, 2021 dash 36, and it's reimbursement insurance claim striker power pro ambulance cot. Whereas the fire department had to replace the striker power pro ambulance cot, cot that was damaged from a motor vehicle accident, and whereas the insurance company did not cover the entire claim, leaving an outstanding balance of 24,727 dollars. And whereas the ambulance revolving fund has a balance of 74,715 dollars as of January 31st, 2021, now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that authorizes the release of 24,727 dollars from the ambulance revolving fund to cover the outstanding balance for the striker power pro ambulance cot. First reading, March 3rd, 2021. For some reason, that was a tongue twister for me. The next one that we have, and the last one, is Resolution 2020, 2021 dash 37, Paramedic Service. Whereas the fire department wants to start a paramedic service for the community, and whereas the cost to do so will be 14,000 dollars to purchase the necessary equipment to license both ambulance. And whereas the ambulance revolving fund has a balance of 74,715 dollars as of January 31st, 2021, now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town council authorizes the release of 14,000 dollars from the ambulance revolving fund to purchase the necessary equipment to license and start a paramedic service with a Newmarket Fire and Rescue. First reading, March 3rd, 2021. And that's it for resolutions in the first reading, and now we have any correspondence to the town council?
There is none.
And any closing comments by town councilors? Council Blackstone?
Yeah, I was curious about the accident. Was, who, was Newmarket at fault, or was, did somebody?
Somebody hit us.
Oh, oh, the ambulance.
Yeah, this was a couple of years ago. Somebody hit, somebody hit the ambulance in stratum, I believe.
So why didn't their insurance company cover it?
I.
Mr. Town Manager, uh, counselor, there's a fairly detailed letter in that attachment from Primex explaining all of that. I actually just pulled it back up. It's pretty detailed because I was curious for a similar question as well.
Does that answer your question, Council Blackstone?
Well, I'll see, I'll read it.
Great, thank you. Uh, Council Dumas?
Uh, no, sorry.
Okay.
I must have hit that one, I.
Um, I have a couple items that I wanted to mention. The first, uh, is just a follow-up from our previous meeting, and in the town manager's report, he had mentioned, our town, town manager had mentioned SB 99, and that is the return of the rooms and meals tax. And I did reach out to Senator Perkins Cuaca, who's our state senator, about that, and I, I mean, for what it's worth, yeah. I will say that I'm not super optimistic about us seeing any funds returned to Newmarket. You know, she said that she would look into it and, um, but there are some other priorities, and obviously they're in the minority anyway, so I don't know that that's really going to make much of a difference, although it is a Republican bill, so who knows?
I was going to say, the majority party is sponsoring it.
Um, but where it's a budgetary issue, you know. Oh, Council Kuiper?
Yeah, I just wanted to, about, about that bill, HB 99, or SB 99, sorry. Yeah, one of the issues I saw was that, uh, if they don't recoup the money from a separate taxation or something, they're going to have to cut services to send us that money, so it wouldn't really help us to get more money through the rooms and meals tax, but then maybe less money for roads, bridges, and water down the way. So I think it comes back to that big question of, you know, you either raise taxes or reduce services, and if they're going to give us a bigger chunk of the rooms and meals, they either need to raise another tax, or they're going to reduce a service. But I think that was one of the issues that I had heard from some of the representatives, so.
I think that's a good summary. And seems to be the problem that we have in New Hampshire, and that we've been faced with in towns like Newmarket, you know, uh, trying to deal with mandates from the state that, um, we now have to foot the bill for. So, um, the next item that I wanted to mention was, uh, and this is, again, something that was brought up at the last meeting, and that's, um, that we are obviously having our election next week, and I did reach out to the Newmarket Association, um, prior to our meeting last two weeks ago, and I did hear back recently that the Newmarket Business Association, that the president wasn't able to really find anybody to host or sponsor the candidate's night. And then, um, we had one member, Brett Larkin, who stepped up and has put together a candidate's night that's actually going to happen tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock via Zoom. I highly recommend people tune in. I don't know, at this point, I think we have, we have a handful of people who have replied that they can make it, um, because obviously it was on super short notice and, um, not everybody could, could change their plans at the last minute, so, um, but for those people who will be participating, um, or, well, first of all, I thank all the people who are participating and just encourage everyone to tune in, to see those people who will be talking about the role that they hope to play in our local government. So, with that in mind, I just wanted to mention, I wanted to, first of all, thank Brett Larkin for stepping up. It's, it's not an easy job, and it's not an easy thing to step in at the last minute, and so I just really appreciate him stepping in to this role. And then also Tim Crimmon, who has just, I mean, he's sort of like an unsung hero through all of this and has been super helpful with managing all of our meetings, and, you know, everything now is via Zoom, and I think that his, uh, his role is really invaluable in normal times, and then, you know, in this, stepping in to assist, you know, anything we need. He's like, yeah, I can help. So, so a huge thank you to Tim for helping out. He's helping manage not just the candidate's night, but, but facilitating, receiving all of the candidate bios, and he will be posting them into the, um, town newsletter and on Channel 13. So, um, so that information will be available to people, hopefully soon. We're still waiting on getting some of those candidate bios, so, um, so that will be happening. And I know that I've had some conversations with, you know, the town manager, with Steve about kind of what we do in the future, because, um, you know, there is a time, we were talking about this, there's a time when we had a reporter in the room for every one of our meetings, and that time has gone. We don't ever get coverage anymore unless there's, you know, some, something, a disaster or tragedy, um, that's the only, it's the only time we get any, any coverage, and, um, we need, you know, the town has always been rightfully careful about getting involved in town elections. I mean, that's not really the role of the town administration, um, but I think that we can be like a neutral party in making sure that all of the information is available for, um, for our candidates and for the people who live in our town to know who's representing them. So, I have a ton of thoughts about that, which I will share at a future time, I'm sure. But I think that we need to, we need to provide some sort of a consistent format for future elections so that it's fair and equitable for everybody who wants to run for town office. And I'll get off my soapbox about that. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that, again, at one of our more recent meetings, I had, uh, mentioned wanting to, Newmarket residents who are representing the town on various boards and committees that we appoint. So things like Coast Bust and, um, the Coastal Advisory Workshop. And so with that in mind, I mean, I've, I've talked to the town manager about that a little bit, and we've discussed, I drafted a letter, and we're going to formalize that after, hopefully after our town meeting next week. But I have had some conversations with Dale Pike, who is a former counselor, and he is currently representing Newmarket on the Coastal Advisory Works, Cross, I think it's Coastal Adaptation Work, Work Group. And so he's going to be coming to our next meeting on the 17th to give an update and just an overview of the work that they've been doing and how that might affect Newmarket. So I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that that's going to be happening. And that's all I have. Oh, Council Dumas?
Yeah, Tony, um, I don't know off the top of my head, uh, this number, but do we know how many of these boards that we have, that we send people to, to report back to the town? I do not off the top of my head. Yes, it's one of those things, I'm almost wondering, would it be helpful to ask for these folks to maybe just send like a quarterly statement? Just send us to it, you know, we can treat it as correspondence to the council, we can add it on the regular agenda, but just so it's there, so there's some sort of public record that these folks are doing. Because I'm sure they're doing a lot of it, but if it's not well-publicized, like we talked about, you know, it, it can sometimes just get put in, put off to the side unfairly.
And that's exactly what, the letter that I had drafted, that I sent to the town manager, is either quarterly or, and that's something that we can talk about.
Yeah.
You know, as, at our next meeting, or whenever we have this conversation, um, whether it's quarterly or once a year, twice a year, I think even if people just, even if people submitted the agendas of the groups that they're, that they represent us on.
Yeah.
Could be something.
Topics that you might be interested in, whether it's like municipal waste recycling or, you know, something big like that coming up.
Because you figure some of these are, I mean, so the Coastal Adaptation Work Group is, is, certainly affects Newmarket. Coast Bust certainly affects Newmarket.
Yeah.
I mean, they all do. Lamprey River Advisory, um, the Strafford Regional Planning Commission, we have two representatives.
Things that have a large impact, that you don't necessarily notice the work that they've done for you, but it's there every day.
Absolutely. So, I think getting that information is important, and then we kind of, it helps us connect with what's happening, too.
I agree.
I am not seeing any other questions or comments. So, um, lastly, I just wanted to, again, thank the three councilors who are running on Tuesday, and I'm sure that we will see you at the polls. And that's it, have a great night. Thanks, everybody, I'll consider us adjourned.
Thanks, Tony.